So welcome to our regular meeting of council and it is on livestream electronically for Tuesday, November eighteenth. So our upcoming events are the MRCC is hosting a Christmas trivia night on Friday, November twenty first at Rosedale Hall, beginning at seven P M. The cost is ten dollars per person, teams of six participants, snacks and cash bar will be available and there will be prizes for first, second and third place. Contact the township office for more information. Angel tree tags are available at the township office. All gifts are due back at the township office by December fourth at four P M. Please ensure gifts are bagged and not wrapped. Our land acknowledgement, the council and staff of the township of Montague acknowledge that the sacred land on which the township of Montague is now located, and this meeting is being held is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Ogunson Anashabi Nation. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. To move the councillor Crabtree and second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that the regular meeting of council agenda dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty five be approved as amended to add eight D Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, letter, rehing fighting delays, building faster act, bill sixty, under information items. All in favor? That's carried. Disclosure of interest now at any point in time during our meeting, still moved by deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Johnson, that the minutes from the regular meeting of council dated November fourth, twenty twenty five be approved as presented this date. All in favor? That's carried. Any business arising from our minutes of our previous meeting? We've no delegations or deputations, so our first is a report by our clerk of county manager, Kristen Cote.
Thank you, Chair. So the report that you have before you this evening is mainly housekeeping in nature. We've been asked to ratify the changes to the Leonard County OPP detachment boards terms of reference. And the changes made within those terms of reference reflect a meeting location change. It used to be in Carlton Place and now being held in the County of Leonard's council chambers. In addition to that, the county is managing the webpage and there's sort of the contact location for all communications essentially. So we're just looking for a resolution from council to ratify those terms of reference.
Any questions, comments? May I get councillor Johnson, second by councillor Abbas, that council ratified the amended terms of reference for the Leonard County OPP detachment board as presented this date. All in favor? That's carried. Still need by councillor Abbas and second by councillor Crabtree, that council approved the minutes of the full meeting dated November fourth, twenty twenty five, and approved the recommendations contained within. All in favor? That's carried. First final, it's moved by councillor Crabtree and second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that bylaw four one seven seven dash twenty twenty five, being a violence or adoption accessibility policy for the township of Montague, be read a first, second and third time and pass signed and sealed this eighteenth day of November, twenty twenty five. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by deputy Reeve Carroll, second by councillor Johnson, that bylaw four one seventy eight dash twenty twenty five being a violence for adopt an individual accommodation plans policy, be read a first, second and third time and pass signed and sealed this eighteenth day of November, twenty twenty five. All in favor? That's carried. Move the councillor Johnson, second by councillor Abbas, that bylaw four one seven nine dash twenty twenty five being a ballot to adopt a return to work policy be read a first, second and third time and pass signed and sealed this eighteenth day of November, twenty twenty five. All in favor? That's carried. We have no motion notice of motion. Action item is Leonard County email for our proposed draft resolution for OPP detachment board. Moved by councillor Abbas, second by councillor Crabtree, that the council of the township of Montague approves the draft twenty twenty six Leonard County OPP detachment board budget, and that the council of the township of Montague approves the establishment of a surplus reserve fund for the Leonard County OPP detachment board, where the twenty twenty five surplus will be placed at end of the year, and that the council of the township of Montague approves the inclusion of the Leonard County OPP detachment board for twenty twenty six and in future years in the county levy with the detachment board budget managed as a separate fund in the county financial system. All in favor? Carried. So we've nothing until any questions of our audience before we move over? Okay, so move by councillor Crabtree, second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council recessed the council meeting at six oh five P M. All in favor? That's carried. Go ahead, Chair.
Welcome to the meeting of the whole in person livestream electronically, Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Land acknowledge. The council and staff of the township of Montague acknowledge that this is sacred land which township of Montague is now located and the meeting is being held is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Ogunson Anashabi Nation. Moved by councillor Johnson, second by deputy Carroll, that community of the whole agenda dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty five be approved as presented this date. All in favor?
You have this carried.
No disclosure, or anytime you can disclose in any interest or issues with the agenda. First report is from clerk penning manager, Kristen Christian, request to stop, pop and close the formerly traveled road crossing one eighty one Fletcher Road.
Thank you, Chair. So this is a very interesting report. This relates to some ongoing severance applications at one eighty one Fletcher Road. The surveyor has prepared the preliminary survey of the property and during their investigation noted a formerly traveled road that was established by bylaw in eighteen sixty seven that crosses this property and their request is to stop up and close that portion of road. There isn't a request to convey it to the owners of one eighty one Fletcher Road because according to registry office records, they already own it. So this is more to clean up a situation that will prevent future title problems for one eighty one Fletcher Road. And there is a proposal to somewhat amend the road closing policy that's attached to bylaw three, four, six, five, twenty fifteen, mainly to reduce the deposit. So typically we would require a four thousand dollar deposit, which would cover costs such as advertising, appraisals, legal. But the property's already been surveyed. It's not being conveyed, so there's no need for a transfer. So the proposal is just to reduce that four thousand dollar deposit amount to two thousand dollars. We would still circulate notice of the proposed stop up enclosure to the adjacent owners and anyone where between Fletcher Road and the unopened road allowance that you can see attached. Let's see here, on the schedule pages in the report. Not give it the north, northeast, eastern. Start in the west and it's the road allowance between lot six and seven, I believe. So it would just be the portion that's crossing one eighty one Fletcher Road, but the individuals that own property between one eighty one Fletcher Road in that unopened road allowance would definitely receive notification as well as any landowners within hundred and twenty meters of the subject lands and that's pursuant to the road closure policy. The letter of request from the applicants is also attached as well as some very interesting historical documents from the registry office. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
These are always exciting, the ones that from eighteen sixty seven, I don't know about this, there's some division there that was all wonky, I want to do it. It's kind of fun to sometimes listen to you say, what were they, what was going on back in eighteen sixty seven anyways? It's always interesting, he's kind of great job, that's great, great to clear it up.
Great to clean up the more housekeeping I've done. You guys have done on the whole last three years, just thinking about old stuff. So on that, moved by deputy Carroll, second by Reeve Jennings, the council dean who has identified its formerly traveled road on the attached draft reference high and crossing the proposed severed and retain lots of eight, one hundred and eighty one Fletcher Road to be surplus that need to the needs of the township. And then council direct stop to complete the road closing, notwithstanding the township's road closing bylaw three, four, six, five dash twenty fifteen as per the amended process, uh, process proposed here on favor. Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Alison Rayken, health home system.
Thank you, Chair. This report is just to give council and the public an update on our phone situation from a couple of weeks ago. So included in with the new building was for the administrative building to also get an update in the phone systems. We had that. There was some miscommunications from a third party provider that was providing the system to the municipality for the last number of years, where we got cut off entirely. So we've now moved back to just Bell Direct because they were Bell lines. You do see in the, although we were down a few days, county I T was fabulous to help us deal with Bell and get it back up and running. And not only that, we're going to see some substantial savings. So by no longer going through the third party who kind of had the market, twenty twenty five per month, we were being charged over sixteen hundred dollars. And we're going to be going down to about twenty fifty five dollars per month. So as much as it was a bit of a annoyance for some people for a couple of days that they couldn't get through to us, there is going to be substantial savings on the other end. So it's a good news story. And so included in the budget, you will see the actuals are actually over budget based on the sixteen sixty four, so it went up almost five hundred dollars a month. And then for next year, we're keeping twenty twenty six, we're keeping them where they should be and we actually should have a bit of a savings.
Awesome.
That's crazy that it obviously went that extreme. I can't believe that whatever the jumping is, but it is what it is. I'm glad we have a better one for sure. So is this a voiceover IP system or is it still regular through regular phone lines?
So it's the regular phone system right now. The other, we need better internet. So that will be a further discussion on. So we are supposed to get better internet through here by the end of this year was the original. It's not here. And we did have that conversation with council on let's wait and see if they bring it forward. So I think we'll still wait to see if it's happens in twenty twenty six. If not, we're gonna need to have that discussion of those funds that we did put aside. Basically stating, are we just gonna put it ourselves? Because there's lots of days that we're in and out of internet and it's very disruptive and we would like obviously the other system as well. So it's just moving towards more efficiencies and into today's time, but it's going to cost us to bring the updated internet here if they don't do it next year, which our understanding is that from Bell is that everything was kind of put on hold.
With no rhyme, reason or explanation. No, yeah, this is, yeah. Thank you.
Moved by Reeve Jennings, second by councillor Abbas, the council accepts the telephone system report as information presented this date. All in favor? Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Alison Rayken, twenty twenty six insurance risk management review.
Thank you, Chair. This is the annuals. We sent our paperwork off to Aon in August of twenty twenty five, provide them ample time to shop around to the different insurance providers to get us the best price. So the insurance market has stayed relatively stable year over year. We did, we're seeing a small increase because of our new build, which has added value. The old building was insured at nine hundred thousand. This building is now six point five million dollars. So that is mainly the change. We actually saw some reductions in different areas in our insurance, but then the increase in the commercial liability for that building is what jumped it a little bit. So it is recommended that we go ahead and approve it for this year and we can have the discussion early next year on whether we'd like to go to RFP and shop. I know that others, treasurers are commenting around that even without their change in a big building like that, they're seeing five to eight percent increases. So.
Like I was gonna say, I'm actually kind of surprised. I don't know why insurance company that, but it wasn't a bigger jump considering what that, the value of that building is. So I mean, it's like, it's sort of good in that sense. But we also see the insurance just keep climbing, climbing and climbing. So I'd love to hear different options down the road. I don't know if there's self insurance stuff to do in the county or something, but I mean, it'd be nice to interesting to see what we can do down the road for insurance overall. Thanks.
Go ahead. For Jefferson, it's actually impressive considering that that building's worth six, almost seven times the value that it did only grow up a small amount. So that being said, I think that's actually pretty good rate for the time being. Moved by councillor Bass, second by councillor Johnson, council accept the proposal, Anne Reed Steinhouse, Inc. in the amount of one fifty nine, six, seven, forty seven, plus tax for insurance of insurance and risk management. And the council appoint Anne Reed Steinhouse, Inc. as the township's Montague's insurance broker for policy term, commencing January first, two thousand and six. Now treasurer be authorized to enter an agreement as required for replacement of the extension insurance program. All favor? The meeting continues. Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Alison Rayken, twenty twenty six budget meeting, first draft.
So the reason why you're all here this evening. So we're going to present to you the twenty twenty six draft budget. You've all had it now for three weeks or so, four weeks maybe, and it was posted online for several weeks for public comment as well. So we'll get started. So the twenty twenty six budget, there's a number of considerations that are taken into the discussions that occur around the draft. So our updated twenty twenty five asset management plan, our Rose Need study was taken in consideration, but knowing the revisions that need to be made, Public Works will be working on that in twenty twenty six. It includes gravel roads noted, so Douglas Road, Fletcher, Guthrie, Holbrook, McLaughlin, gravel section, McLaughlin, Nolan's, Ruthven, Salter, Uphill Wood are all receiving granular application in twenty twenty six. Twenty twenty seven gravel roads, just so everybody's aware, because I know we've been getting some phone calls this week with the weather that we've had. So Brown, Buffham, Virchell, Ford, McConnell, Maguire and Sturgis are all set for twenty twenty seven. So budget, we take into account the current financial markets, which we've had conversations with council, the stress on the community, long-term financial planning, CPI, August was one point nine, September was two point four and October is in two point two. Other municipalities and county COLA adjustments were unknown at the time of the draft budget. They're kind of all over the place, to be honest. Staff retention is the biggest discussion around all municipal tables. So COLA for twenty twenty five, for us, we've included a two percent. The average of August and September was two point one five. And now if you add in October of the two point two, you'd still be around two, a little better than two. I agrees. Oh, go ahead. So we take into account, obviously municipal, provincial and federal legislation and policy, the strategic plan and the work that we made towards our updated strategic plan. Grant applications are not included in budget. We see them as nice to haves. We don't include that into budget in case we don't get them. So just take that into account. It does include a new position for facilities lead hand equipment operator. The total employment costs are expected to be about ninety eight thousand, seven hundred dollars with sixty thousand being funded from capital and thirty seven thousand will be funded from the salary reserve with seventeen hundred coming from taxation. So this position will result eventually over time of about a two point six percent increase. So take into account that one percent in twenty twenty seven will be just to remove the salary reserve. So the position, we're hoping that it will be the removal of summer students of thirty thousand dollars is what has been the cost. We think that the trade-off honestly for a full-time person versus summer students is going to be far exceed the value for that. So the new complex hydro heat maintenance, we left them budgeted the same as the old buildings until we can get kind of a full year review. So there was forty five thousand, nine hundred dollars between the old fire and the old public works allocations. So currently based on the hydro bills, the hydro bills for that municipal complex are less than this municipal complex. So we think that that will be substantial, if not potentially some savings depending on the year. So the budget includes not reducing the current level of service. So we've included everything that was included last year to, and obviously try to enhance some areas and services. One of the big enhancements that's included is to keep the old excavator and to get a substantial amount of ditching and brushing done in twenty twenty six, again with gravel roads. If we can get the drainage enhanced, the gravel roads hold up better and hopefully less complaints. Change in capital reserves. So municipal public works and fire complex has gone up by a hundred and eleven thousand, so about three percent for the adventure of the new building. And reserve, we reduced the reserve allocation for this building from twenty to ten because we've done a substantial amount of upgrades to this building. And I think as grants become available, that's what we've been using for this facility. And the future plan is that when a portion of that is paid off in ten years, that this building then would get a re-enhancement without dementia money. So we made a small adjustment there. So we took into account some of the increases in expenditures and reduced revenue. So sixty seven thousand was an increase in wages and employment costs for the entire township and council. Such your CPP, your E I, your benefit, your COLA and your stuff increases. Eighty four hundred dollars was an insurance increase. So we were waiting for pricing. So we were almost close to that. So it's, it's going to be a small increase to that. We increased five thousand for I T security based on changes that we've made in that department in In Camera. Small increases to the cemetery boards will need to be a discussion item. We've been doing it every year and whether we want to continue to do that or not. Ten thousand dollars for disposal of the waste contract and thirty five hundred dollars for the building department mileage to begin the discussions of vehicle allowance for this department. So when we add another person in public works, we're going to pull on the half tons that we have. So that's a facilities person and to begin that discussion. Seventy five hundred dollar increase for bunker gear and N ninety five masks for fire personnel that were discussed with the fire master plan. And then twenty five thousand dollar increase for OPP costs that were included because we were provided notice that it could be up to an eleven percent increase, which is more than twenty five thousand, but we accounted for a portion of that in twenty twenty five. So it would be less of an impact in twenty twenty six. And we also put a substantial amount of money into reserves to help this exact situation. So increase in revenue. So some planning fees revenue due to the changes in the fees that happened in twenty, at the end of twenty twenty four, so twenty twenty five has realized an increase in revenue. The rental revenue for Rosedale Hall, it's been exceptionally busy. So we've increased the rental revenue there because over the last number of years, it has been consistently more. Increase in taxation revenue from the Galapo Center. It's under new ownership. So this may change because if there's demolition of portions of buildings, that means assessment comes down, which means our portion also comes down. So keeping in mind that this amount of money could change drastically, which would have an impact on us.
Sorry, was on that one. Is there, is there a minimum amount? There's not, I mean, I thought there was a set amount, I didn't, I didn't agree with that. So there's no minimum amount.
So right now we're about one sixty, one sixty five a year though. So if there's demolition of buildings, that's going to change. I think if there was a minimum amount, it was nothing near that.
It's not near it, but the minimum amount was, I think it's like heads and beds were.
It's very low. So I'm just saying, that demo was going to be a drastic change of parameters.
So if there's any building though.
It's a drastic increase.
Currently, yes.
Okay, we would go up.
Yeah.
If there is any sort of subdivisions built, we would also get.
Yeah, currently, yeah.
Sort of.
But currently isn't part of it protected or heritage?
A small portion, but they've been working with the ministry to get that changed. So it's not the whole property. So I think that we just need to keep in consideration that that's very much a variable revenue. Because demolition happens a lot quicker than building happens. So just keep that in mind. So we took into account requests from local boards and committees and then tax levy transfers. So administration dropped from the twenty to the ten plus five thousand for an election that we put aside every year. Fire and public works complex is now at three twenty nine, so an increase of a hundred and eleven. Public works is four hundred thousand, fires at seventy seven and recreations at fifty with twenty five thousand used to offset Smith Falls rec agreement, which is up for negotiations for the end of next year as well. Items that are not included in the budget is the adventure amount because we still need to have that conversation. We decided to wait to see what December economic impact has with the Bank of Canada interest rates and if they remain status quo. More than likely, based on the conversations that are had, we will lock in before they increase them. And also the blown out of bits off to the side here for you. So O M P F, we got north. So OMPF, we got notification, it was going down twenty eight thousand dollars. So that's a reduction in revenue for the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund for us. The insurance, uh, we did about a three percent increase. Um, and then Police Service Board funded by the county was decreased uh by sixty six hundred dollars because it's now going through the county tax levy, so the change. And I have OBB contract costs are still unknown. So. We never formally adopt our budget until January, so if it ends up being less than eleven percent, we will adjust accordingly under our council. So all of those changes uh currently uh will realize a twenty five thousand dollar additional requirement from levy than the original draft budget that you called. Um.
On the uh Beckwith for McLaughlin Road, will we follow up with a letter just as a reminder to them?
We have capital coming. Do you wanna wait or you wanna?
I just saw that note in this, that's all.
Yeah, I think we have capital. Um, so some plans that we plan to complete in-house, uh, updated long-term financial plan and the gravel maintenance plan and policy um through public works. The donation request flows November thirtieth, and we'll bring the report just like similar years to council for for that item. So unknown still to date, we haven't got the conservation authority asking with the changes happening there. I'm not, I'm not sure we're gonna get our ask.
Yeah, I hope you will. I have a meeting end of the month where I'll find out some of that.
Okay. Uh, airport expenses are still ongoing discussions, library negotiations in twenty twenty six. Insurance costs, again, we've, we now know that. Uh, OBP contract costs. Still unknown. If Beckwith will approve the McLaughlin Road capital project, um, so. We don't know at this time, so it really, we should. If this evening council says yes to capital or committee, um. I think we'll follow up with them with a letter indicating that we've included in our draft budget with an intent to pass it in January. And that we've provided two years notice as per our agreement, um. To staff, we'll send that to staff um to get a response. So the total new assessment for new builds has, the province has held the assessment value to twenty sixteen again. Um, there's been no word on that being released, so everyone's budgeting based on twenty sixteen values. Um, so we don't have our total new assessment for the end of the year. Uh, we were, at the time of the draft, we were about one point five six percent. Um, year over year, we've been about two percent, but we have a couple of big projects that are kind of in limbo that it may not hit until after budgets passed. So what's the overall change, the tax rate? So included with the changes that I just presented to you of the additional twenty five thousand levy. Uh, this is the tax rate, so it's different than what's in your draft budget. So it's about a five point zero nine percent increase. Three percent of that is debenture for the new build that we've taken small chunks each year for for the last three years to account for that. So it results if, if you had the median assessment of two hundred and thirty seven thousand for this municipality, you'd be paying approximately ninety eight dollars and thirty three cents more a year. For our municipal portion, county hasn't set their rate yet, and the school boards have not set theirs. Capital. So our development charges study is due to expire in twenty twenty seven, so that will be a project uh taken on in the administration. Uh, we have budgeted approximately thirty thousand with a portion of it being paid from the development charges. Prior when you were able to collect to offset the cost of your development charges study. Fire, so is asking for um new radios for all of the members, uh, dry hydrant and accountability board. Keeping in mind that the dry hydrant, the chief and I will always be looking for grants to fund that. Um, but we've included it in the budget to make sure that continues on, but we will be looking for funding just like the previous one. Public Works has a new tandem plow. So the twenty sixteen is slated to be replaced in twenty twenty six, twenty seven uh with the change in operations and keeping a spare default truck. Uh, the twenty eleven international will not pay pass safety next year. Uh, we've been advised of that, so it is the truck that's slated to be removed off the books anyways. Um, and that truck would be coming in. Public Works hundred thousand dollars capital in-house, so council approved keeping the John Deere wheeled excavators, who are older, uh, I think it's an O eight. And staff indicated that additional staff person would assist, so in twenty twenty six, the intent is. For ditching and drainage along the roadways to really work towards that. Uh, so again, as we discussed, sixty thousand wages uh and forty thousand for equipment maintenance. We are hoping that it's not gonna be forty thousand for equipment maintenance, but we're just putting in a number there. Again, it's from reserves, if it's not used, it's not, it's not pulled. Um, but it also allows us some funds to rent a rock hammer attachment if we need to, uh, to be able to do that. Not a useful rock, uh, to be able to do that work as well. So roads themselves, we have a a large culvert on Matheson Drive um to be replaced. Um, I think it got missed potentially during the capital works of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, six hundred fifty for McLaughlin Road, uh, I think. Expected that it probably, if it's based on pricing from this year, would come in less than that. Um. So it's partial rehab to an asphalt, similar to the other side of McLaughlin. Beckwith tends to. Prefer asphalt over surface, and that's a split road. Um, again, we need approval by Beckwith. So with council's approval, we can send a letter to staff, um, just stating, you know, we've included it again, and this is two years, not gonna stop this part. Recreation twenty maker development, so uh focus on bench, so we have the crime stopper vents installation, the picnic shelter that used to be out front here. We'd like to relocate over to the uh Twin Trakers, wayfinding and history board with the school. So, um, that's kind of included for that. Uh, again. Usually lots of grant funds available for recreation park things that we will be applying for, not included in budget.
Uh, with the McLaughlin broken, it's been two years that they've said no. They don't want to do it or.
So we have to provide two years notice. So we provided a year worth of notice, and then we included it in last year's budget, and they. They did not include it in their budget, so now that's two years, and as per agreement, two years notice, and then it needs to be done.
Oh, so then they have to put it in. Oh, we are.
Well, they don't, they, I guess technically don't have to, but it's going against our agreement.
Okay.
We did a reminder of a county to Reeve and Deputy Reeve as well. Um, just a little reminder.
But they, so based on our agreement, they're supposed to then put it in. But they could say we're going to do a tax increase.
An election year, anything could happen. So we always like to give council some um items that we didn't include in the budget. We try to give you. Um, an already cut down budget, but we like to give you items to at least have a conversation if you want to spend more money or not. Um, so this year was transfer out McLaughlin Road and move on to something else. Our recommendation is still McLaughlin, it is our worst road that needs to be done. Um. Public Works at Den- Culvert Identification, it's been on for several years now, nice to have. Good mate. Sound system at Rosedale Hall, again, needs to be updated, potentially grant funding. Uh, we took it off. Tractor with attachments for parks and rec, discussions for future, just to kind of get that out there that. As the park space grows, some of these things are nice to have, but until we have the funds. We left it on just the discussion items, nice to have, but did not include any of this into the budget.
So what would the, the, when the, you talked about a tractor before, it goes along with something else, so what would the tractor be different than like? The loader that we're talking about, and they're getting all that kind of stuff, like what would be the advantage?
So it has the PTO, which would have like a bigger mo- pull behind more to cut. Bigger fields of grass, or if we had soccer fields and all those kind of things. You can also put the box blade on the front of the tractor. There's just different attachments that. Wouldn't go on the backhoe, because not PTO driven.
Yeah. Thank you.
So allows you to do some small projects in-house as opposed to having.
Absolutely, like pull behind snow blower for an outdoor rink, or like just different things that can be done, or maybe for um. Flooding the walking or the walking path, or doing things like that. So just different items. Yeah. One of them. Um.
Well, it's good, sorry, it's good to have that in that sort of thought process as we're building, because it's one of those things where. You never want to spring something on the idea. I think it's good to be saying, okay, so what is, where, how will this work and what is we're looking at?
Yeah.
And as we talk about it over the next year, two or three. How that sort of fits into it too as well, I think it's good that we're, we're discussing it now, so we can understand where it's gonna go. That's really good, so.
And and staff's also looking at trying to have more staff. Where these might be able to be useful tools to do other things, to. Be able to do more grading, to, you you know, so when we have all these items, these tools. In our, in our, in our. To our availability, we can do other stuff other than just. Our out and, you know, to, as much as we like to give some work to. Camels Trucking and everyone else, it's nice to do some stuff ourselves as well.
But I think that we as staff are also being, oh, like, we're also aware of the demand on everyone right now and the funds, and. We're saying, yeah, this is nice to have, and this would be eventually over time, but not in this one, not in this one.
Other than the value, yeah.
Yeah. So uh reserves, this is really just a breakdown to show where reserves are being used, um. I'm not gonna go line by line and kind of discuss it, you've seen it. Why not just go to the last result slide, Grace? This one just shows you at the bottom. Um, so basically, we have no reserve usage yet for the new complex to venture because our first payment. For the first year or two, we're gonna be short our payment amount that we're gonna pull from where we go for our our reserves. But also at the bottom, just that our total reserves are staying relatively the same, uh, at about one point four four times where our actual levy is. So that's a good. I think councillor Johnson, we've asked that question before, so that is a pretty comfortable spot to be for us, um. So just so you see that, that we're not just draining reserves either to do these things, that we're um trying to be responsible on both aspects.
This was one of those, one of those things that we need to discuss the campaign thing. What is the appropriate amount to have for reserves? And 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 no auditor and nobody has like the magic number of what it should be yet. But I'm trying to figure out what's what's healthy for your, where you're, but there's no, there's no magic number, magic percentage, like that's the uh.
No, but I think that uh like general, from my perspective, you'd like to be able to cover yourself for a year.
Yeah.
If you absolutely had to. It's no different than being at home, right? Like where. Do you have six months or a year worth of mortgage payments set aside? Like what's your comfortability um in that type of thing? So for us, I think we're sitting, for the size of this municipality, we're sitting in a, in a okay place for a script, so. Yeah. And. Uh, oh. So comments for the public, we received one. I don't know, council may have received other comments or questions. Uh, we received one. Um, and it was in um basically indicating a detailed draft budget. Uh, biggest concern is the roads and grading and the resurfacing. So. Again, in relation to that, the budget's including substantial drainage uh and brushing, so ditching and brushing work. And also in the next six months, a report coming back in relation to. Gravel versus hardtop, the costs based on our current application of gravel, um, and the costs associated. So. Um, understood, I appreciate the comment, um, and you know, we are trying to make changes.
I think.
Can't do it orange.
Sorry, it, just a question, when we're talking about gravel roads and all the surfaces, there's a set. Type of like gravel composition, for lack of a better term, that you have to have. On let's say Richardson, Virchell, any of these other roads that we're talking about. It's not something that each municipality can play with, right?
So gravel meets a civil, it's supposed to meet the civil analysis for granular M or granular A or whatever you're choosing to put down on your roads. Um, if it doesn't meet that civil analysis, then yeah, that's a problem with the contract and the gravel. Um, and that information is also gonna come forward to you with that report, um, to make sure that we're meeting those requirements as well.
And just because that's a couple of the comments that I've gotten is, are they using the proper amount of, you know, it's mostly people who. Necessarily aren't experts in something like that. So they go somewhere else and they see this road that looks really good. And then they tell me about the road, and I go, well, I don't think anyone actually lives down that road or drives on it very often, so it, you know, doesn't take the beating, but. That's just a question I've heard a few different times, so.
Drainage has a big impact, too.
Yeah, I've learned that, it totally not, so it's. Any of that kind of stuff, which goes back to in the budget, if we can have the proper equipment. To do different stuff in the ditching and stuff, that makes a big difference, so.
Right.
Yeah, I I mean, we we money you the wet area, that's 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 the downside, is like, you know, it's like, uh, I always laugh because it's like, I'm listening to history side of the world, and they found the. The elephant, or sorry, the uh the whale bones off the, off the trail, because ten thousand years ago, this is completely underwater. So I mean, like, it's, it's interesting, we're like, you know, we're still, and we're still very, very wet, we have, uh, that, and and I could just take a one, that two was one was that, there's. Like, I don't want to sneak on behalf of anybody, but the side of, there's no roads that are neglected. They're, they're discussed thoroughly to make sure, to try to figure out how we can balance things out as best as possible. I think public works is a fantastic job, staff is a really, really good job at that. At trying to, and then we talk about those things, there's no like, oh, we're gonna pick this road this year, pick this road this year, like, we all have those things, we all do those. We have the uh the studies, we go everything through it, so I think that's uh, there's no, no thing about losing. Uh, or 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 neglecting roads. And it's one of the biggest things, it's like, it's when you learn about going to these road conferences and everything else. This is the problem in all of the province as far as uh their roads are just being closed down. Uh, we're billions of dollars behind as far as that goes, so. I, you know, I didn't think it's like strongly advocate to your provincial uh parliament member to uh to transfer more funding so that we can continue to work on those kind of things, so. Yes. I go.
I I think, you know, uh. Money is doing very good with very limited. Um, the staff do a, a lot of. Trying to trim the fat where they can and not. Putting too many frills and 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 so on and so forth, and and try to. Do the best they can without really reaching to the pocketbooks of of uh the repayers, um. I I love the fact that we're coming back with a report that we're gonna look into possibly what the cost would be over a ten-year. I believe it was a ten-year outlook on what it would cost for gravel and versus hardtop services, and. And we're at least looking into those to see what can we do and what's the reality of it, and what would that look like and and. Is it feasible? Uh, and and would people like what the number looks like? So I I just, I really like what what you guys did on the report. I think it's uh well thought out and, uh, yeah.
No, it just seems important when we look at our draft budget, too, you have to eventually pay the paper. You can't run on a shoestring forever and think that you're not, one, gonna burn out your people, two, wreck all of your equipment. And then three, start jacking up the rates. So you have to have a balance, and right now, I I see nice balance in this. Because we need more people, we need more staff. Like we do, if we're gonna provide service to everybody, get these road things done and stuff like that, you have to have more people, otherwise it's not gonna get done, and then we're not gonna provide. The needs that the people keep bringing forward, so I'm pretty happy with uh with draft budget for sure. Just for it, good, thank you.
And and the fact that we're not hiring duplicate staff, we're hiring a position that is split to do what we need. It's the thinking ahead, as well as staff have taken the time. They've got the budget down, there's not. It's not their pad of the way that in past years, and then councils would have to spend time going through. Staff have taken the time, which council's very appreciative, of giving us a budget that is how they need to operate, and they should be able to operate. And we multiply in the complex, so our increase is relative to. The other municipalities in that we've got a regular complex that's gotta be paid for, but when you look at what is actually then in our operational side and that, we're doing very well, so. Good also to staff and management for doing that for us.
Well, those are just like going along with that, as far as staff, and I think they did an excellent job. And I think we're very well situated for the building and everything right now, so I think it's a very good budget. I sound personally.
So, um, to speak to that and kind of where we sit, um, on the budget on page, it's thirty five of the agenda package for you guys. Um, it just shows the average increase in taxes paid over twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five and us and all the municipalities, because over the last. Three years with this council, we've tried to keep it relatively low, those those increases. So you'll see where we were about nine point two four percent over that timeframe. Um, and Grace, you have the agenda.
Yeah. Page thirty five. Thank you.
Well, Grace, as well for that, one thing that has to always be remembered is that as, as small a unit, we're a small rural, you know, our, our tax base is mostly residential. Other places have an commercial one, industrial, and two brands that really help them on their budgets, so we're doing very well for what we've got.
There, that one. So you'll see on that table that, um, so over the last three years, we've tried to keep ours, uh, low. Uh, so we were nine point two four, and you'll see down the list, Car Place, that's even seen huge growth, they were eleven point four, Backwith, again, big growth, eight point six eight. Um, Miss Mills, ten point eight six, D and E was almost fourteen and a half percent, Day Valley was almost eighteen percent. Uh, Greater Mad, so Redford County, but twenty percent, Lander Highlands, almost twenty two percent. Um, so we have tried to, to keep those increases low, um, and are continuing to do that, while still operating and increasing and developing, um, so uh, we just thought that was good information to provide to council too, and the public. Okay. So, um, for the departmental review, as everybody goes with doing similar to other years of just kind of, um, going department by department and just asking questions if you have it, there's not a huge amount of changes, the biggest change really is with the venture, um, leasing and wages.
Yeah.
Um. That good with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's go through it all, then maybe we can come back.
The detail notes were there, so I mean, a lot, but will be there, but any questions, we can address those.
Okay, so the first one is, um, if you're on your working budget, it's the, uh, tax, it starts with taxes general. Um, so layout's a little different when our G L changed, I apologize for that, but um, so really the only thing on that page is our levy that's changing, and that will be also increasing the twenty five thousand that was shown there this evening. Um. And the O M P F funding will be coming down. Questions, that's a pretty pretty good one. Uh, administration is the next item, so it shows some of the, uh, wages, um, coming out of the reserves and also it's an election next year, so the clerk has, uh, each year, as I said, we put five thousand dollars into reserves, so we don't hit the taxpayers all at once in an election year. So we have reserves of approximately fifteen thousand being used, um, for the twenty twenty six election. Uh, majority of the changes are wages, um, reduction in hydro based on actual, now that the fire department is, um, not off the backside and, um, from that was a split, and it was just an estimated split. Uh, five thousand dollars increase for the insurance, which we discussed, a smaller, or, uh, another slight adjustment to that. Um, we moved the janitorial contract, uh, of ten thousand just up to the admin wages because it's a part-time staff person and, uh, it's just a manual entry that we do, so we just included that part. Um, based on actual, so the rentals. Um, we reduced the transfer as discussed by the ten, and, uh, that's primarily up for admin. Also, planning and building. We at airport, there's nothing showing on airport, we're still having negotiations for that. Uh, planning and building, we've included some additional training for our inspector to complete the CBO courses, uh, ten thousand dollars zoning amendment, we include, that was in twenty twenty five budget, we went ahead and carried it forward twenty twenty six. The thirty thousand for the DC study, um, and then really changes in wages, and then that discussion of increasing the building mileage to start that change, um, for either, uh, further mileage or some kind of a vehicle allowance, um, for that side of the inspector. We do anticipate looking at building fees again, uh, with revisions in twenty twenty six. Uh, bylaw, uh, protection and control, um. The only change there was just a reduction in dog tag revenue by a thousand dollars, everything else was the same. Uh, we're happy with our bylaw contact and services and would like to keep them moving forward. Council. Uh, wages change based on two percent, and we've added a per diem of three hundred dollars per day for conferences, which we previously had not. Um, so that's the change there, um, and increase a small amount for the dinner for Christmas, because like anything, the Christmas dinner has gone up in price for the volunteers and staff and council, um, so that is the adjustment there.
The per diem is just matching what the county does.
Correct, yeah, and, and that has been in place for a couple of years, just we weren't budgeting, and now, um, we do have council attending some conferences, so I just wanted to make sure. Uh, drainage superintendent, no change on that one. Fire, everybody's favorite budget. Um, so the first response to Merrickville, slight increase based on the agreement of a three percent change each year. Um, the wages, which we've discussed with council, changing, um, from uh, having volunteer points and flat rates, it's all, uh, one line, and, um, that, those are the main changes to line items on that, um. We increased the cost for the bunker gear and N ninety five masks. The three percent adventure for the new build is sitting under, uh, Firebus Fire and Public Works. And, um, we've added three thousand for our new tanker because we're keeping, uh, the old tanker as well.
I just asked a quick question with the fire side of the wage center, um, the, the deputy chief is a, is a, there's a, it's a salary position for that.
Oh, they got changed as well.
That was all changed, because most of the longer, I said, salary.
Nope, it's an hourly, the same as everyone else, um, and they have a maximum up to twenty hours per month to earn kind of up to what the old salary was.
That's why we have the point system.
Yeah. Yeah, so we made adjustments, but similar, but now hours, uh, are accounted for.
Perfect.
Yep. Uh, any questions on that? Hey, uh, library services, so, um, with the direction of council, we've included the twelve five, uh, back, like, into the uh, for discussions to occur in twenty twenty six, so it's status quo, and that is how we apply to our funding for the province for the, uh, revenues. Okay, street lighting, um, small change, just to continue to upgrade old streetlights. Uh, I know there was a streetlight upgrading policy or program, I think it's seventeen, twenty seventeen, maybe. Um, there's a number of lights that got missed, so, uh, we've been slowly updating those. So it's just to make sure that there's some funds there to continue to update, because it does have substantial saving on the other end for the hydro usage to the LEDs. Very good. Uh, police services, um, again, so we're transferring twelve thousand five hundred from the reserve allocations, um, that we made to set ourselves up whenever that large increase happened, and then the province reduced it some. Um, we also made the change of keeping a portion of our OPP, uh, the reserve allocation's gonna come from this year. We kept our OPP cost higher than what they ended up billing us to account for coming back. Um, to be able to kind of absorb it a little slower than all at once. Um, so that's really the only change there, and again, that's just an estimation of eleven percent based on a letter stating that the max is to be eleven percent, but that could change. Uh, recreation. Uh, as that indicated before, um, the hall rentals, we changed it, it was twenty five hundred, we bumped it to five thousand. Uh, currently, this year, we're sitting at fourteen thousand, so we could potentially increase that a little bit as well, the hall has been definitely busy. Um. We have the capital, so we'll be finishing the pickleball courts, um, next year, which has already been approved for reserve use from, uh, council, so Public Works was great and built the, uh, pickleball courts, the, the base and the drainage. Uh, and it got paved just before that early snow, uh, but the fencing and the line painting will happen in the spring at this point. Um. So, uh, the rec committee did request, um, seventy five hundred dollars, I believe. And we dropped it down to five, they have eleven thousand in reserves, they've, you know, we've done, uh, the staff and, and the rec committee working together, like, they've had a couple of years where those reserve allocations were able to be there so that they can fund year over year, um, they've had a surplus each year. We think it's time to start reducing that, because that's what that, that's what that reserve was set aside for, was for eventually over time, it's that's how it's funded, not necessarily through the rate pairs. So we've reduced it slightly with the use of reserves being approved in budget for council, if they need it automatically, if not, um, if they need additional, they can just come and request additional use of that reserve. Um, so sitting in a healthy spot. Uh, the repairs and maintenance, uh, so we did bump it slightly, so as the hall gets used more, the hall requires some, um, love to make sure that it looks great, so last year, um, staff painted the hall, which saved a substantial amount of money. Um, but we also upgraded, we got card tables, we got the floor scrubber for the custodian, instead of mopping it four or five times, the floor scrubber. So all those kind of things that when it's being used, we have to invest, so people continue to use it. Um, and then new for twenty twenty six, again, kind of a nice to have, and, uh, with adding the facilities person is uh, our lights are getting installed at twenty twenty eight, or so we'll have lights for winter sliding and winter skating and some winter activities over there, which was the biggest request we had last year. Uh, we put four thousand dollars just for park maintenance, so, um, some things may get used, may not, with the person, with this position being new, they're gonna kind of set a work plan that may not happen all in twenty twenty six. But to get us started into twenty twenty seven as well. And then just park supplies, um, so whether it be volleyball nets or new things like that, that, that happen. So that, those are new GL items to this year, which are kind of exciting though, because a large portion of that park was built on grants and funds and lemons that came out of the ground from our building that we crashed into, uh, and made some lemonade over there, so it's pretty exciting for it to continue to grow at limited cost of the rate pairs and free recreational space for the, everyone to use. Public Works. So, um, again, we've gone over the capital item, so I'm not gonna hit that again. Uh, so we've added in the full-time person, with the added employee, we added, uh, the extra thousand dollars for the uniforms and safety gear, uh, that they require. Um, we reduced, uh, the training slash consulting fees, just based on the capital projects for next year. McLaughlin's done, we have the documents ready for McLaughlin, um, so we'll have the Matheson culvert. Um, so we felt that that could be reduced, um, and still have some money for, uh, training and the consulting fees that we require. Uh, same for the, um, crew, we dropped it from the twelve down to ten, um. They're still training, but it's uh, not as, a lot of them have some of the road school and some of those expensive ones, um, and it's more of that regular maintenance training and things like that. Uh, so we've changed the crowd rest protection to twice a year, so it's getting undercoated after all the equipment gets cleaned in the spring, it'll get all oil sprayed, so any salt residue, whatever, that's sitting up if it's out in the sun, whatever, it's not eating everything, and then cleaned again and done in the fall, so that's a regular, that's a normal application for equipment. Um, we've been down, we were one, once a year, so we've, we think that the value in an extra twelve hundred dollars a year is going to be good for the equipment and the life expectancy of some things, so.
It should be all, all the vehicles, all hundred dollars?
Yeah.
You wouldn't.
Yeah. Um. Sorry, my book's backwards here. Uh. Nothing. Um, so we did add the twenty twenty five Kate's excavator, uh, that we received late this fall. We added ten thousand dollars in, uh, expenditures into that line item. Not saying that we expect ten thousand dollars, but it, it's again, to get that item in, it is an item that gets used a lot and will have wear and it will have its new break-in maintenance that'll be required and those kind of things. Um, paved road line painting, we increased it slightly just based on the actual from, uh, twenty twenty five. Uh, hardtop equipment rentals, so again, we haven't used that line item for a couple of years, so we did reduce it down from ten to five. Um, paved weed control, the last number of years has been substantially less, so we reduced that down. Um, roadside mowing stayed the same. Uh, so un paved gravel miscellaneous expense, um. So again, we left that in there for potential ditching, rock removal operational costs, um, for ditching and draining, we didn't wanna take it out because next year, if, if our old unit continues to be, that, that it still sits there for use. Uh, if not used in twenty twenty six. The calcium, uh, we left, uh, we reduced the double application. Um, and this was really a discussion for council, whether they'd like to, because we pulled it from reserves as a trial. Uh, we did notice it made a difference on, I think, high-traffic roads, they got new gravel application and got the two um, uh, applications of calcium, but it did help bind that new gravel application. Um. I believe that that's what Public Works saw, not so much on the roads that didn't receive the new gravel application. So that may be a discussion on the calcium application, or for the ones that are higher traffic getting the new gravel and how we apply the first go, and then potentially have some for a second go on some of those roads. Um. Winter control contracted services, so we had this discussion with council on, uh, getting a loader, a, a used loader. And so we bumped that ten thousand dollars for that internal adventure back to ourselves, um, so that increased fifty five hundred bucks. And, how we can?
One quick thing on, for the, on the budget lines for the, the, can we change the new, uh, cannon truck, just like everybody else at the year, is anything else?
Uh, yep. The new tandem, yep. All that, no other questions for the others?
I have questions, but I think I wanna, I wanna say to the, anyway, we gotta get a, a rainbow, we're about to.
So R V C A, we left it at, um, the previous, it has about a thousand nine hundred dollar buffer there. Again, with the unknown of what's happening with the conservation and the amalgamation of the conservation authorities. Um, and R V C A usually, um, had minimal increases as well. Uh, Summer does normally a pretty good job at bringing, um, small increases, so.
Yeah, the building that they've run forward the draft budget was less of an increase than last year.
Okay, so. We're fine.
And no matter what happens, we'll talk about amalgamation, next year will carry on. Can't see the government moving out that, that quick, yeah, yeah. But you've been brought to change.
Yeah, there's also.
Might think of it up there.
So, um, the social services side, we left the cemetery donation at the same as last year, which, um, you've been increasing it slightly, uh, and you can have that conversation if you'd like to increase the cemetery donation again, um. We don't want to take the cemeteries back over, um, as far as maintenance, so it is nice to give them a small increase, but we also get no information, um. So that's up to council, and the school bursaries, um. We send out to the two schools, uh, for two bursaries each, um, we only ever get applications from the one school. Um, but I'd like to keep it there, uh, and then the miscellaneous donations are the ones that we get the applications for, and so we left it the same.
I think those are all good, good as well, and we might also like need things around, but then we could be pretty good.
Yeah.
Values are the overall value.
Okay. Uh, last but not least, weights management, the, um, we took out the compost or sales revenue of four hundred dollars, because we've been giving them away through the county program, uh. And actually, that's been very successful, um, we have weightless for those. Um, so that's great. And then uh, the small increase for the collection based on our agreement with G I M.
Do we have no cash tag sales like a?
Yeah, so they're all sitting under the special tag and pickup revenue. Um, so. More than, more than likely, we're gonna amalgamate just that line, because the special tags are now the same as the regular tags. So we can't actually distinguish on what they're using it on. Uh, some people come in and get a full sheet.
What are they doing?
What are they doing with it?
Yeah.
So that is the tag. Yeah, so that's kind of the highlighted overview. Um, are there any questions? Do you have department heads here as well? Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or that's a uh? I will uh, try to keep this close in an hour.
I don't know how I can do that.
I do have. It's uh, ten to nine o'clock, so it's good, so I just wanna make sure I scroll back and make sure I don't miss anything from this area, okay? Um, yeah, I've already answered the gallipole question, so my, my big one's gonna be right off, off the hop is um. So the tandem truck for, are we planning on purchasing that in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven?
So the plan is to order it in twenty twenty-six, hope to have it for early twenty twenty-seven. But if we order it in twenty twenty-six and based on the way things have been. Um, if we get it in twenty twenty-six, the twenty-eleven will pass safety. So we'll be down. One of our additional trucks, which has been actually very nice to have.
So I guess the, and, and there's no chance, like, like right now it's past safety, but there's no chance for it to pass safety whatsoever. This truck is like, it's, because it's not.
It's a frame issue, so it won't pass.
Yeah, basically, that, that's, that's the end of the road. And, and, and I mean, it is, it is great to have, and I, and I, and I, like, I don't disregard what's in order to do as well. If we didn't have that for. That year or six months, would that be detrimental to us? Or is it like, you know, things where it just is not really?
You're gonna have the grader out, so you're gonna be less efficient. You're gonna put the wear and tear on the grader for something that should be on a truck, and the grader's more expensive than the trucks. So you're really just pulling a different piece of equipment, I think would be the. Yeah.
Would be sign, well, we could do it if we're talking about trying to find ways to, to navigate sort of that, that, that cost too as well.
Sure, that's all from reserves though, that's not on the impact of the tax levy at all.
The.
Truck.
Yeah, but the truck is, it, what I look for, we don't have any reserves every now, we're putting the money in the reserves and then paying another reserves. Four, four hundred thousand dollars is coming in, but it is, it is all coming from the tax levy. Right now, to pay for that truck, we're just funneling it through reserves.
For sure, but it's not, it doesn't have an impact on the increase, though unless you're planning on cutting the public works reserve allocation.
Well, that'd be my question too as well, is if, if, if we're present, because it is a, a value that's going into the pay, pay for it. If we were to say, we'll put three hundred thousand dollars in and budget for the following year, then to. Uh, put that hundred thousand dollars in to pay for it in twenty twenty-seven to, to finish off paying for that, for that device, or that, that piece of machinery.
So I'm not gonna recommend the council to reduce your reserve allocation to roads of four, that's the four hundred, if anything, it should be going up. So the cost of everything's gone up, and that's where we're starting to see is that we don't have those reserves. Ready now, because the grader was more money, the excavator was more money, tandems are now more money. So if you cut a hundred thousand from that, that reserve allocation, that's automatically three percent next year that you're looking at. Plus, plus the thirty-seven thousand for the salaries, plus the half percent for O P P. Plus, I'm gonna go over all these items, so that's another three percent that you'd be looking at if you wanna cut that.
Agreed, and now, and what if we also uh, hold back to go into contingency reserves and say, wanna use some of those contingency reserves to offset? Some of that, so we're not, once again, putting so much on the levy too as well, at this, at this current, at this current time.
Like to cut public works reserves allocation?
Not, not necessarily not to cut the, the, but instead of using that, once again, we're taking four hundred thousand dollars out of the levy to put into the reserve right now, so we would put. Three hundred thousand out of the, out of the uh, out of the tax levy, but use a hundred thousand dollars out of, out of, out of contingency reserves to put into the public works reserves. And then look at seeing how we can uh, touch that back over the next few years, uh.
So for me, I'm never gonna recommend to council to cut your biggest department's reserve allocation. I would start with recreation or something that. Is not a major service to this municipality, so for you to cut, you're gonna have to bring that back in or else. People are gonna see a reduced service in public works, absolutely. So you can pull from one, you can, you know, borrow from one. But eventually it's gonna catch up and we have to replace that.
Yeah.
You can't just keep pulling the contingency reserve and, and root, like, deplete it, and then in four years go, ooh. Not, we don't just need four hundred thousand, we need seven hundred thousand a year. So I'm not gonna recommend that, that's entirely up to council. Um. But I wouldn't be pulling from public works reserves.
No, and, and, and I, and I, and I don't wanna, I, I wouldn't, it's one of those, once again, it's, it's, it's also to facilitate, facilitate a conversation about saying. We're looking at a, at a, from a council perspective to, like, don't get me wrong, but this, this budget is well thought of. Staff did a great job, there's nothing against that, but there's also the councils sort of purview to look at that and go. There's a, a five and change percent there too as well, that, that, that our residents are going to question that we don't obviously. Beat that down the road a little bit, or that have that conversation. I mean, I, I just wanna make sure that, I, 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 that's why I appreciate, I, like, I, I don't. That's, that's one of the things about these circuits is to have those conversations too as well, to make sure that we're, we're uh, we're looking at, I think, and I, I appreciate that. So you're, you, you wouldn't have any, like, as far as recommending it, using some of those contingency reserves to try to help offset or try to lessen the blow of that, sort of that tax.
You're just pushing it down the road to the next council. That's all you're doing. Every been an election year.
And, 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 and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I'm hammering that point though, but it, it, the, the election side of it too as well, when it's, when I listen to other municipalities. So, it, it, it's one of those, sort of my side tangent is, is we, we talk to different uh, counterparts of the, that, around the county too as well. And say, hey, what, what are you looking at? What are you doing? And, and one of those big discussions was just like, well, we're looking at, we're, we're, we're gonna keep it at this percentage. And some of those sort of comments have been election year. I'm like, well, what are you cutting from? And it's like, we're not putting as much into reserves. We're not using that money for, we're not, we're not doing that, we're not doing that. And I'm not advocating for us to follow that lead. I think it's uh, good that we're doing, but it's, it is one of those, to be cognizant of about, of what those other discussions are having too as well. Uh, other municipalities, as like, our residents will look at those discussions too as well and say. But this is what you guys did compared to everybody else, so. And so.
So I fully appreciate, that's why we showed the three-year average, because. We're not gonna be the municipality that just cuts during the election year. We cut the whole way through.
Yeah.
So they're all higher than us over the last few years, so it's pretty convenient then that they're cutting in an election year. Um, so I think that as opposed to pulling from reserve allocations, you have the discussion of taking. The diventure out over twenty or twenty-five years and paying twice the interest and not doing a three percent increase on that.
So don't touch contingency reserves, it's no recommendation right now as far as.
If you're gonna pull contingency just to cut from another one, you're just setting yourself up for still that three percent increase in twenty twenty-seven. Plus the other increases that we're gonna see, plus the O P P are going back into negotiations for twenty twenty-six. So we already know all these things are coming, so it's entirely up to council. But I wouldn't personally pull from one of my savings to pay it from another savings, I'm just gonna have to replenish all of that.
Uh, I find, I find yours, i- i- if we try to cut or, or. Make it seem better for this year, we're stealing from Peter to pencil. Uh, we've seen it, if you go into the records of even mine, he's asked, or we would go zero, zero, but then you went out a lot of. Um, you, you end up hanging, if we, if we don't buy the piece of machinery this year with the waste deals and tariffs and all that scoring. That vehicle will be one hundred percent more. When we try to buy it a year or two from now. If we put all the wear and tear on the uh, grader. We may take a year off the life of that grader, two years off, off the life of that grader. If, if, if it's for, for the, and, and we're gonna use the, the average that I already had, the two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. It was ninety-six dollars, it is, yeah, yes, ninety-six dollars, ninety-six dollars, um, and taxes, and. But if we don't do that now, next year is two hundred and two dollars. Because we're gonna eventually have to get these or, like we said, reduce the services and. The emails about the, the roads not being graded as much and, and the, the, the sides of the roads not being cleared and. It, it's just going to get worse. You, you cannot steal from today to fix tomorrow, because it's just gonna cost us twice as much tomorrow.
And share through you, like, if we're looking at a one percent recreation reserve as a perfect one to pull from. Uh, and don't put it into that, because there's all kinds of funding, and there's already funds in that reserve that you can eventually put back. That's a nice to have. Um, we've done a good job of getting those kind of grants, so that's almost one percent right there if you're looking to cut.
So, and that's exactly what I was gonna ask your question about was, is it rec the only one that can do something like that? Is there any other ones that you would look at in that day? Because as I said earlier in our other meeting, was that we have to find that balance, be able to provide all the service. Um, done the chew string wise, we're looking at another person, that kind of stuff, so I get that. Um, other than the rec part, which you said would be one percent.
Close to.
Would you look at any other ones that you think would, will build in that sort of a situation?
So the only ones we're putting to are fire, public works, rec and admin. We cut admin down from twenty to ten already, so you could make it zero if you wanted to. Um. You're not gonna cut fire, if anything, that needs to also go up with the change of the cost of trucks in the fire department. Um. And then public works is the same. If anything, public works actually needs to go up. But we've, we've maintained its status quo to allow for the increases for the diventure on the new building. Um. So really, you could cut the twenty-five thousand from the rec reserve allocation, because the other twenty-five is being used to offset the operational. Agreement that is also coming up next year, that they may want substantially more money for the capital projects they have planned for that. Um, which would fall into twenty twenty-seven. Um, and or. Extend out the loan on the big building and pay more interest to cut this year during election year or just leave it as this?
No, no, that's, so that answers my question, the only place really is rec that I see, and.
That's not an essential service.
Yeah, that's not, because the other stuff I'd look at as an essential service, but the public works, fire especially. You, we have to provide these kind of services, so I get that. So, and extending out. Our loan thing is, you might as well.
Again, what. Yeah.
Like that's, that'll destroy future councils, so that for me isn't even on the table, so. Now, appreciate that, I just wanna make sure that I had not missed something that was available that I didn't see.
I mean, just so, so everybody kinda knows that, that happens to watch this, what is one percent?
One percent um, is about thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Just so everybody can understand, like, that's, happens to watch this, it, that's. Because her, her township is so small, that's what one percent equates to, which is, is not a lot and it's hard to try to find just. Thirty-eight thousand dollars to, to save when you're, you're on a shoes for current budget, um, you know, so.
But it is our job to make sure, as Jeff said, to have those conversations. You have to go through everything line by line to do that. When I look at this budget, though, I don't see a lot of places where you can do anything.
Or wouldn't cut from roads, that, that would, that would be my.
Well, it's, it, I'm with you on that, because that's the complaints we get all the time are about that, and to turn around. And all of a sudden, you cut there, well, don't worry about the next election. Like it's, you know, you can't, it's, it's that balance that was vulnerable before. So, again, I just go back to. It's that one percent conversation. If I look at the budget and I look, where could I? Get it under five is what I look at.
Yeah, and I think that our county reps can also push the county to reduce theirs. And also the impact on the rate pairs. They, they never cut, they always increase, there's not a lot of questions there. Um, in relation to like from rate pairs, but it's M P and the taxes too, and they have substantially more budget and substantially more reserves out there.
Uh, and then we get the, what is a reserve and how much should that reserve be? It's a guy that conversation there at V C A, because they have various. And now they're gonna amalgamate, call themselves, and that double what they used to have for reserves. Right.
I still have more, but one thing I want, I want to comment I wanna make though. This is the kind of conversation that is great that we're spurring, because this is what we need to have, so when people have these questions. From the public and they say, watch the video.
Yeah.
Because this is what we, we didn't just say, yes, we're thoroughly discussing it, and we have obviously a, a, a great staff that can answer the questions too as well, they're not, they, they, and they know the answers. So I, I like to continue because, with more questions, because exactly, we're spurring up that conversation, we're making sure that we're doing everything and that we're crossing those things. Um, so I really, I, I really enjoy this, I think this is really, it is really important. Um, so for the development charges study. Uh, if we were to delay that, is that a, is that a, uh, and, and we have to do it or it's? Like, the, the big change that we might see coming from it?
Nope, so we don't have to do it, but we can't charge development charts then come January first of twenty twenty-seven.
Charge them, so you have to update it in order.
But we don't have to charge them, so, so it's entirely up to us, so we don't have to do it. Um, again, that's not on the tax levy.
Correct.
It's coming from development charges and reserves. Um, so. We don't have to do it, become twenty twenty-seven, we can no longer charge them until we have a development charges study.
So that's, that's, once again, I'd like to bring up that question, because I think that's an important aspect to know too as well, if I were to come up saying, why are we doing that? If we don't do it, and those development charges paid for a lot of that future study, that future stuff that we wanna do.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that's a, that, that, that's a really important one to make sure that we're, we're crossing through as well. Um, the, the one thing about the uh, uh, they'll get back every miles. The uh, the uh, for the fire radios, uh, is that for like each guy carrying a radio or is that, is that what, just read me on what that is?
So currently, yeah, what are, my members carry is a pager on their hip. So we have found over the years, since I've been in twenty sixteen, these pagers are very unreliable. So they come to the hall and then they have to get a portable radio to go into a fire scene. So what I'm doing is eliminating the pagers that we're supplying, and I'm gonna go on portable radio for all members. The portable radios are cheaper in the long run per unit compared to a pager. And also they'll have a radio to go to a fire right with them. So currently I only have about. Eleven portable radios, so that I only have eleven on the scene. So this will currently give every member a portable radio, so you know, anytime he comes here, he has his own personal portable, he can go into the fire with it. Add it to savings, like these pagers are just junk, they've been junked for years and, you know, I think we're gonna get a better life expectancy out of the radio.
That's, once again, great, is it, so one of the, I've, I've heard about the fire departments having uh, just an app on their phones, is that, is that something different or is that something?
Yes, we all have a who's responding app as well, uh, keeping in mind that's just another tool in your toolbox. Um, sometimes i- it's reliable for the most part, but it's certainly not reliable like your dispatch center is. You know, I would never one hundred percent wanna rely on, you know, your who's responding app.
So the app is, the app is good, but the, the, the radios is something that's gonna be most reliable, or that's gonna be the best way to make sure that we're saving lives and we're doing.
It's uh, yeah, certainly for your own members and the public, yeah, for sure. The who's responding app is a great uh, function. We have it now in our new fire hall, so our operators can look at the T V and see. You know, I got dry, I got members two minutes out, I'm gonna wait for them, rather than take off without them. So it's a great app or something like that, but um, certainly not for, you know, initial dispatch.
Initial dispatch, those radios are, they, they, once again, I'd appreciate that. No problem, the communication is fantastic. Um, the, the culvert on Mathis and Road. Uh, I seem to recall, but I could be, I could be wrong, is a, a couple of years ago, we still had about five years left on that, on that culvert. Is it, is, are we at engineering coming back saying it is now done, do this in twenty twenty-six, or is that something that can be delayed a little bit longer? I'm, one of the, two as well, is just cutting up that road too as well, right?
Yeah, so again, it's similar to the virtual culverts that said they had three to five years and they were failing. It's in a similar position.
We had, we had staff in the culvert and pictures and it's, there's holes in it, yeah, severe corrosion.
So we could have road, uh, holes like we did at, at Burchill.
Well, the corrosion's at the bottom, it's more to do with the bottom line, um, but, but certainly it left. Left too long, yeah, that's seeking whatever failure, absolutely.
So twenty twenty-six is the, is the time to as well, they ask, we, we can get that done.
In our opinion, yes.
In your opinion, they're very, yeah, I respect that, and that's uh, exactly.
That's, that's a question, yeah. So what we're talking, are we talking the same thing that we had in virtual where I could put that stick right through the top of the one?
No, so, yeah, and, and like I said, the, that, that was different, it was failing in the top side.
Yeah.
And in the bottom as well, virtual is some sterile shape. Uh, this one maps in similar size for a second one I did in virtual. And the erosion again is, is more, you know, below the waterline and, and up to more main corrosion. The holes right there, yeah, you can see that, that D material.
Thank you.
So, right, so I was gonna say. So, right. So I was gonna say, is that because we're, part of that was OCIF funding we were using for that.
OCIF top up.
Top up, yeah, top up.
What, you mean the original project itself?
No, 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 the OC, uh, to use.
Oh, yeah.
To use to to replace this over will be OCIF. Part of it is that funding. That's why. It dried up there.
Uh, yeah, so it's the OSIF, um, partially OSIF, partially reserve.
And that's why it's on one of those, another side of the two as well. I'm wondering, is there, again, if it was, if we could, we could use our OCIF money for the following year. And utilize that money for something else once again to help soften the blow on the tax rate too as well. If there's a possibility behind that, I.
OSIF has to be used for capital project though, and all the capital projects are being funded from reserves. So we wouldn't see a change in the tax levy.
Unless we feed something differently, but yes, I hear your saying. Okay. I appreciate that one too as well. Um. It, the, for for our reserve now in recreation, we have uh, one that's at right now. But that doesn't include what we're taking out right now for. Uh, the hydro. We're putting in in the twenty two acres, correct? Because right now we have it like the the two eighteen, but it won't be yet.
That is what it's at. Um, I've estimated for the other amounts to come out in twenty twenty five that were approved, and that's the amount that will still be there.
Even after.
Estimated, yeah.
Insulation and the uh, back to as well.
Yeah. That's the estimation, but.
Okay.
If anybody helped go ahead, do you?
Uh, when you say that's the one percent. Uh, how much is that one percent? I think you said on two hundred thirty some thousand, it was ninety eight dollars a year, Wisconsin was.
No, so the total increase of the five point zero nine percent is ninety eight dollars a year on two hundred thirty seven thousand.
Two hundred thirty seven thousand. So if there was one percent taken off of that. Does that, how would, does that equivalent, I can't say the word equivalent, like privilege? To per household, like what would it drop?
Two hundred bucks, less than that.
So it's not.
It's not a huge.
That's what I mean. It's not a big.
Eighteen forty seven or something like that.
That's what I was getting at. It's not a huge.
By one percent.
Thanks.
By others is suggesting to council. Um, there's one of those sides too as well as we, as we, as we recognize the um. The cost of living for everybody and what everything is going to as well. This is a, this is more of just a uh, show of understanding. Is that we as council, we pay for these, our freeze, we we freeze our pay. Uh, for going into next year. If we don't do it, if we don't do an increase, obviously staff would continue with their update. Ours is like, it's minimal as far as what the override, the oversight of it was. It's just more of a saying. We understand, um, and we understand the difficulties that people are having. And we wanted to go, and that's, that's kind of one of those things, that one of the small minor things that we can do. I just throw it out there. Uh, it's not something I usually recommend or I think to do because I think we have, we always want to make sure that we're kind of maintaining. On the same token, I think it's, it's a, it's a good sort of symbolic gesture to show that we recognize the um. The difficulties that people have in there too as well.
Only trouble we have with that is that doing that, it catches up to you down the road. It was on council before, and that's what happened. They didn't do it for a few years and then all of a sudden they had to take a bigger percentage to get them with other councils. So. I don't think it's a good idea for the sake of that little. I just from going from before to then, then you do have people getting upset. But I think that's just understandable, you know.
And it's this falls, I think that they were using their example. They haven't done it since twenty eleven and now they're going through a shmoong. I think that's a big discussion. That's turning into a big, big, big one. I I just throw it out there.
It's a good idea and I think it's, it's not bad, but it's, it'll catch up with the next council or.
I I I would say I'm I'm all for it. It doesn't really affect me if if they reduce it or or not, or even if I took a production. Uh, it it's going to be who who the council is in the future and what they end up doing too. So it it's. And uh, going back to it, the 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 amount of all of our salaries. Um, the, the uh, raise increase of the end of the year is. Uh, insignificant. If I'm not mistaken, but but again, um, yeah. If if it's going to make a difference, I'd face it.
Same thing. I mean, I'd, I'd be fine to freeze. The only thing I would say is I strongly recommend that it doesn't get missed. Because you don't want to get into the situation of what Smith Falls is or what Montague was years ago.
True.
Because that's it. Because the other thing that Smith Falls is also saying is that it's not a lot of money for the hours that you're putting in. And is that a deterrent as to why there's not a lot of people that want to run? And that's it. We don't run it for the money. But at the same time, when people have to take time off their job, put ten meetings, put ten committees, et cetera. It impacts them and the the money that you get doesn't offset it. So that's where it's like. I'm fine to freeze. It's just down the road. It doesn't want that for the people.
Do we have the ability to not accept our money?
Mm hmm.
So next year I could say I don't want any of it.
Yep. I've had a deputy um, mayor who's on.
All right, last point is uh. I don't have any. Uh, yeah, I did, I did. Uh, if, because I've heard other missolages, what if we skip line painting next year?
What if we skip it?
Yeah.
Well, again, I mean, it's uh, whether or not it's a safety issue, right? So we look at, we could certainly look at the condition of the lines. We use it in a contractor this year. Perhaps it's a higher performance paint. Um, again, I think the total amount, Ali, if you remember, it's just over twenty thousand.
Twenty six thousand.
Yeah, uh, so. We can, we can look at it. That would be the risk. Has it faded? You know, does it, does it create a safety issue? I know the power operator certain appreciated in the winter time when they want that center bear on the hardtop roads and stuff. See that yellow line? Motors appreciate it as well. So I'm drifting, right? If you're center area, you see that you can, you can find a little better where the road is more the shoulder of the ditch with her. Um, but. Yeah.
Possibility, but your avocation is that it's great for the snowball riding to make sure that they're keeping the line safe too as well for following it.
And motors.
And motor aside.
The line's accessible, crazy. Absolutely.
I think that's one of them. And I know Miss Valley's got that, that has skipped in the, in another year to try to once again. I didn't know, like, okay, it's good enough when it gets faded, but that's one of those discussion points saying. If we don't have that discussion, we don't have that talk about it. Uh, did we do our due diligence to make sure that we asked all those questions? So I appreciate that answer too as well. And I. Thank you for me. I I I thank you for entertaining me. I did keep it under the hour.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, but I wanted to make sure that. If there was any spur of a conversation to this all, because I think that's an important part that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that that's what the rate pairs are looking for us to do. So, thank you.
I I can tell you that the the paint is much better than uh, this year than it was the the previous year. The reason, yeah. It's actually sticking. I I don't know what the composition of it is and and whether that means you can skip it. But uh, definitely a lot better product this year than previous.
So if I can just kind of, so as you talk about cutting items or referring them or waiting. Um, twenty twenty six year, what the impact has for twenty twenty seven. So. Um, with the budget that's in front of you, uh, the impact for twenty twenty seven is automatically the thirty seven thousand for the wages that are being funded from reserves. Two to three percent for the new complex adventure and the twelve should be actually twelve five for the policing. Uh, because fifty percent was accounted for um, in the twenty twenty. Five year by reserves. So you're already looking at four to five percent starting next year. So if you now. Remove line painting of twenty six thousand, um, the fifty percent of the policing that's funded by taxation. So it's fully funded by uh, reserves, the thirty seven thousand, the hundred eleven. We need a, we're starting next year's budget with a need of a hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. Um, so that is. Approximately five percent starting our budget without any kind of whole increase on salaries or changes. Um, so I just want to also get uh, kind of council consensus on the items that um, the deputy W R brought up. So. Um, there was discussion, uh, I guess I brought up as an offset. So recreation reserve reduction of twenty five thousand. Policing a hundred percent resum, funded from reserves. So that's a twelve five savings of the tax levy. Rec committee could be fully funded from reserves. They have over eleven thousand dollars there and anticipate that a surplus again at the end of this year. So that's five thousand dollars. Um, if you're going to cut seniors programming, do you keep the ten thousand? Do you let the funding go? Um, if we're looking at cutting roads, then we should be looking at cutting those kind of things. Uh, council pay with no increase. That's seventy three hundred dollars and skipping line painting is twenty six thousand. So that'll save us eighty five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Approximately two point two five percent. Um, and then. Really the ones that would have to be reinstated in twenty twenty seven are that line painting, the OPP plus the additional OP costs that are going to be coming. The thirty seven thousand and the one eleven for the adventure. Um, because the discussion. I get, again, we need consensus that we don't want to extend that.
No.
Out from the ten fifteen years because you're going to pay for, you're going to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars more interest if not.
Oh, you can't.
So uh, I just need consensus on what you guys are uh, approving to cut or remove. Um, so that we have an idea for twenty twenty seven as well. So recreation reserve reduction of twenty five thousand?
No.
We're cutting it or we're not?
Not, not cutting it.
We're, we're, we're trying to bring young families to.
Sure.
So reducing recreation, I don't think is going to.
It's the reserve allocation.
Mm hmm, yeah. But, but mine's still going to get pulled from somewhere at some point.
Absolutely. I'm saying if we're talking about cutting reserves, that was the.
So, so it's, it's.
So policing a hundred percent funded from reserve or leave the twelve five?
I, we definitely twelve five. That's only going to get worse for us.
Okay, rec committee?
Rec committee, they, they, they are doing okay. Uh, and and we are reducing uh, or we have been reducing every year. Uh.
We've had surplus every year.
And we've been reducing it every year. Um, so I I I think they're gonna.
A small amount's not going to make any, any difference.
No.
Seniors programming?
It's been such a success or no, go ahead. But so, yeah, it's such a success that it hasn't been any.
And in Montague's uh, township is still uh, senior having, uh, as far as. As, as far as our, our population, we, we, we are an aging population. So as much as we want to bring young families in. We are still uh. I, I, I still like you, Jim.
Well, for ten thousand, we're getting almost fifty.
Yeah.
So ROI is substantial.
And that's it. And we, and because money's not going very far, it's allowing a lot of the seniors to be able to do. Things that otherwise they may not be able to afford.
Just making sure. Uh, council pay no increase, seventy three of the dollars.
So what's that? Seven thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I just, like, I don't want to be the one taken this way, but you're, you'll come back to haunt you down the road. That little bit of money, it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a, I think that one, there's really more symbolic and it's not a suggestion that, that to continue that down the road, right? It's, it's, it's the, it's sort of the one in your, you know, people might say that you're doing that also because it's election year. I don't know. But I mean, but I, I, to me, it's, it's more of a symbolic side of it too as well. It's like, I think, I think it's one of us on council where we are. Um, I say, I'll use the word lucky, but we're lucky in, in, in the way that we're able to have our lives. Um, but we should recognize that there's a lot of our families that are struggling. Um, that's why it's more of that symbolic side of it. Um, I really want to recognize those ones that are struggling. Uh, that's an important aspect to us. That's, that's, that's more of a suggestion of, of why I bring that up. Um, because we know that the, we have a lot of our residents that are, that are in.
What are you doing in Lannard? Are you, and they'll take and they'll take cut too?
We have our discussions on Friday.
Yeah.
But I'll happily, I'll happily uh, uh, make that recommendation. Like, once again, it's a, it's a small. But that's symbolic side of it too as well. And I think same idea sitting around the Lannard County table. Um, a lot of, I think, are mostly fortunate there too as well. So like in that fortunate side of it, because we have that sort of symbolic discussion. Not looking to do it for an election or the, or anything. And and outside of it, it's more of like, just anything we can do to try to like sure, make sure that we're telling our residents. Uh, that we understand that this is not easy because once again. I, I, I agree with the budget. Why we had the conversation with what we're doing as far as, and 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 that increase. I mean, it sucks for the, for everybody, but also the same token, it's, it's what's needed for what we need to do. And I think uh, it's another part of that discussion point of saying, what are we doing to make sure that we're, we're, you have actually had that discussion that we're, the increase is. What we've needed and what's our some sort of maybe symbolic sort of side of it. So I'm missing.
Um, so if you do small things like not accepting the uh, cola. Uh, you take the small surplus that they've had in the. Uh, rec install that, see, end up with a fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars.
Hmm.
So you drop.
Ah, not even half.
Not even half percent.
I have that.
Well, yeah.
So skip line painting?
But when you do stuff like that.
Can't, you, I wouldn't suggest, I mean, I don't even think that's something we can say right now until next year when you're looking at the lines and say. Hand you, but, but the other thing is, by that point where you can actually check it. Do you already, it would have been cheaper if you already had them booked to, to, to say, okay, we need the line being. Or, or, or now because you're booking them, when you had an opportunity, you're waiting till, let's say. May, because now we're, we're, they're in the, the midst of it. Are you paying thirty eight thousand? Are you paying forty two thousand? Because now they're busy and they're saying, well, we'll, we'll try to squeeze you in. Are you going to pay that, that difference? Because we waited. And I'm not saying I don't know that you would actually be able to speak better than that. I, I'm just. I, I know that some of our, our, the, the services that we provide, the brown or the uh, everything, if we put it out now, we get great pricing. If we go when we need the service. You, you pay a premium. I don't know if this one is one of those and, and.
This one, just sorry, just to jump in, this, this one is, would be a joint tender. It has been in the past with D and E. Um, hopefully next year would be with the counties, Montague and D and E are jumping to the county. It's the same contractor, same product. So we should actually see, hopefully even see a status on that.
So, so maybe a, a reduction from.
Yes.
Twenty six, twenty eight thousand to.
Essentially.
To twenty, because now you, you're a much bigger conglomerate of individuals and they're just basically driving down all the roads. So. So, so we might not even have the, the, that much of a savings by saying, no, you, you. The, the. You know, I'm very giving of myself and I know a lot of us are, we do, we do, we're, we're at a lot of the municipal events. Uh, you know, donate our time, donate our energy, donate our efforts. Uh, I donate money. Um, just to, to help fund events to, I. Give uh, things to the community, give a, a free turkey dinner. Um. What? You know, I'm a taxpayer here too. I'm not rich by any means. I work every day like everybody else. I, I, I'm willing to do anything for anyone. I give you the shirt off my back. I, I just don't see where we're going to be able to hold without suffering something somewhere else. Move it without it being uh, uh, a very insignificant uh. Badge of honor is to say, well, I didn't do this for you.
Yeah, so when I went through the budget, I don't see a lot of places where you actually can have substantial saves. I actually don't see any. Unless you want to crush yourself in twenty twenty seven. So I look at this and you have a five percent increase or just sorry, just a little bit more than five percent increase. Because we don't have a large tax base, we have no commercial, we have no industrial. We don't have anywhere really go other than to cut services. And I don't believe that we can go to that. So the fact that Ali, you put out a budget that I think. Is excellent and covers everything and keeps a balance where we have our services going forward. I just don't see, and I do enjoy the conversation with all our. But I don't see where we can make any significant cuts that are going to make a difference. And I'm okay with the. Not paying yourself two percent. That's, that's fine, but it doesn't really do anything to our increase. So I, as much as our role is to see if we can't cut some things out of it. I think for years, as you show in that one chart, we've had low increases for the last three years. So. We have to build this building. Like, you can't live in here anymore. Your fire trucks couldn't even fit into the buildings anymore. So. We're at that point where this is a year that we might be a little bit higher than we were last year. But it means that we also won't be out of control in twenty twenty seven. And that's our role too. Is as a council to make sure we set our future councils up for success. And my concern right now is that if we cut. Anything that is fairly major, it just, everything that we've talked about comes back to bite us in twenty twenty seven. So for me, it's, we're kind of rocking a hard place right now. I, I don't see anywhere for us to go. Because usually you can look at a bunch and I can see outliers. Yeah, get rid of this, get rid. Because usually you can look at a bunch and I can see outliers, yeah, get rid of this, get rid of that. But I don't see a lot of them, and Ali, that goes to your skill in doing budgets. I think it is almost like a bare bone sort of budget to begin with, so I don't see a lot of places for us to go. My my opinion, but it's just other than.
Well, that's what I initially said, was that we have a budget presented to us by Ali and all our management. Taking the time to go through and present what they need to operate with. And not a large increase, cuz I mean, when you look at, it's it sounds like a lot, but when you know that half of that increase is going to pay for the new build. That is an increase that will be in alignment with other municipalities and others that will still be a lot higher than ours. But to say that we've got a brand new build, we all knew we had to pay for it. And it it doesn't make sense to start and cut back other places when that is still a very reasonable budget.
So if I may, so um the last item was reducing the reserve for roads.
No.
Okay, so the the one thing I'm going to bring up to you is that. Um you know, we have the long term financial plan of how to fund the new building and do uh smaller increases each year. Um with that came the policing change, came some other items. So an item that a potential option for council to think about. Um prior to our next budget meeting um would be. Um so that two to three percent increase was out for twenty six, twenty seven, and a smaller amount for twenty eight. You could not do it in twenty six, that hundred eleven can be funded from our reserves, I have to do the long term plan based on the interest and things like that. Potentially not do it in twenty six, but that then is gonna extend you out into twenty thirty, so you're. Locking in the next council for those increases um for that extra year. Um that would bring the interest, early interest rate, the um. Tax rate to about a two point one seven percent increase for twenty twenty six. We don't recommend that, I would recommend eating and taking on that full twelve five of the OPP then. So you'd be about like a twelve, a two point four. But you can only extend that out the one year, like you you got, you know, it's it's one of those things that, okay. Uh no different than people's personals, like this year's really tight, I had to replace all my tires and my car, my struts and whatever. Um so my savings, I wasn't able to add to my savings, but then next year I have to. So that's an option um that you can think about uh by all means. I'd like to do the numbers and show you what that looks like um. But it's going to have to happen, uh cuz I think this this council is saying, no, we don't want more than ten to fifteen years. Um so it's a potential option, but I would, if you're gonna go ahead and drop it down to the two point one seven. And extend that out um to an additional year, we could absorb the hundred and eleven thousand for one extra year um out of the reserves. I recommend taking on the full PP cost then of that twelve five and being more at like the two and a half percent.
So the one eleven, where do you say that's coming from then?
So that's taxation currently, so what I'm saying is you don't do that increase in twenty twenty six. We fund it, we have almost two million in reserves to help offset the years, we don't have the adventure, the appropriate adventure payments. Um and then so that long term plan, and forgive me if it went out to twenty eight or twenty nine, the original plan of those small increases. We would go out the extra year, cuz we skipped a year, so basically we're going out an extra year. And keeping in mind, depending on when we lock in our adventure. Depending when in twenty twenty six we lock it in, we may only have half of a year's payment.
Okay.
So it's an option to think about um if council's looking at reducing from the five percent.
So reduces this year to what?
So again, I would recommend that you including the OPP, I wouldn't go lower than two and a half.
Okay, so we're two and a half instead of five this year?
Yes, and next year will be your thirty seven thousand, your two to three percent increase. Uh but you're not gonna have your twelve five, cuz you would have absorbed it this year.
So but n- next year, whether it's this council, another council, a new council, what's that percentage gonna look like?
So that's gonna be um four percent. You're gonna be, but you're gonna be four percent no matter what.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying to take the two to three percent that you're skipping this year, I'm saying add it on at the end, I'm not saying double it on.
So realistically, whether we're paying it this year, we're just, we're just pushing it down the line, you're making this year look better. But you're not really.
Council's looking to cut, that would be enough.
You're not, you're not cutting.
No, it's just pushing it down.
You're just extending.
You you're just saying, I'm not paying my credit card bill this year, I'll pay it next year.
Yes, but you're eating, but you're taking the policing and you are actually paying it this year.
But but you're, that's only twelve thousand.
I know, but it's still the same, like, so whether you pay that this year or in three seasons time, it's still the same increase, I know what you're saying. But so you are pushing it down, but that's not getting pushed down, cuz you're actually taking that on.
I think those are, once again, I think, once again, doing our due diligence to make sure that we see those numbers, we look at that, it'd be interesting to see too as well, if we, what if we put, if we did. Uh half of that, like we, instead of putting a hundred eleven, we put in fifty, or we put in like seven here, and what is that, how do how do we get that number to four percent per se for this year?
So were those the numbers that you're gonna sort sort? So were those the kind of numbers that you would extrapolate out for us so that we could show that it's fifty, is it seventy five percent?
Yeah, so we did about fifty percent um and then took on the twelve five, we'd be about like a three point eight five, which also very reasonable.
Yeah, and and cuz I like what Jeff was talking about there, and because what I was thinking about was. It's not really like paying your your credit card a month later or something like that, you're you're pushing it down. But because you're taking that one eleven or a portion thereof, you're not, you're gonna reduce this year, but you're not gonna be. Making equal amount of the increase the next year.
Right, you're also tying a future council for another year, so just keep that in mind that. You're tying a future council for another year.
Which also doesn't account for if something else comes up that year. That costs another substantial amount that we have to add as an increase.
We have to also hope though that the province releases the frozen assessments from twenty sixteen that is absolutely killing us. Because Montague's sales has changed substantially from twenty sixteen, and I don't mean that taxes double and all that. What I'm saying is that with the development in Carlin Place and Beckwith, it has made the value of properties in Montague. Um substantially higher than what they previously were, we have a lot of homes valued under a hundred thousand dollars right now. You know, so it's not that, to be clear for anybody that's watching, we're not, if your if your assessment doubles, we're not doubling your taxes, the tax rate actually goes in half. The average is is doubled, it's just that then the appropriate, right now we have properties that are not appropriately assessed. Based on twenty sixteen versus some others, um so we need that reassessment um. To really equalize that out, so we have to hope that that happens as well in the next. Three years, you know? Um so we're not the only ones feeling that, everyone is feeling that, um the province continues to increase. What they need from us, but they freeze us.
Yeah.
You know, and then they cut our funding too, so um they cut our funding, increase policing, increase our assessment. We've got all of those things going, um and as the previous report, we were the lucky one of three in Lannart County. That got the Olympia cut.
Yes.
Yeah, so. I just, i- if council's looking, if council's not looking to cut, uh and remaining status quo, that's fine, but.
I would love to see the numbers that you were speaking about, about the one eleven or portions thereof.
But I wanna show you out like the long term. Though, cuz I don't want you making a decision without thinking of the three years that follow.
No, that's actually what I would like you to extrapolate out, is how I look at it, so then we can see that. And then you can make an informed decision on, okay, we can save ourselves maybe a couple of percent here. Yeah, but where where does it, cuz you almost gotta pay eventually.
Because like you were talking about the hundred and eleven thousand that we're gonna pay out to cover this?
No, so what, the the final one that I'd be working off of is fifty percent, keeping fifty percent of that. Um and then putting the other fifty percent on the back end, basically twenty nine, twenty thirty, excuse me, I don't remember how long that went out. And then including the policing in, so that that is also already included, so we're more at that. Three point.
You're gonna be paying a little bit more interest over that six months.
No, we're gonna use reserves, so we'll be interest. No. The payments are still gonna be happening.
But if you're using reserves, you're spending on the money that we have.
The payments will still be made, so it's still the same amount of interest.
Okay, but we're not, but we're not making interest out of that money if you spend it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so so that's what I'm saying.
But on a hundred thousand or fifty thousand.
I I'm just, I'm just saying it's 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 another additional, like like, cuz we gotta make sure that if we if we lost ten, twenty, thirty thousand. That's another percent.
Yeah, it won't be that much interest.
They're just saying, just depending on how it all works.
Yeah, yeah.
On the long term.
Yeah, but that's how banks think you think they're losing money sometimes, if they project out that, oh, we would have made this revenue. When in actual fact, they were never counting on that revenue in the first place, so it it's a bit of a mug's game. When when you look out like that, because we can all forecast huge, it's like with a little recovery to do it right now. Is there forecasting a huge? That in a year, it might be half that, so it's it's one of those things where you never know what you're really gonna get for something interest rate wise. And if the Bank of Canada holds this next one, and then perhaps starts to increase, or they drop again, you know, you don't know. So it's one of those things where if they're gonna hold for the next couple of calls, then we really wouldn't have made much more money anyway. But it's just one of those things where Jeff, I think asked this, is there something in reserves that we can do? And this is kind of a, not really a reserves way, but it's kind of a, now we can wait to do it.
Yeah, so this isn't cutting a reserve allocation, this is reserves that were already there, some of it was from surpluses over the last couple of years. That we've allocated to account for this um. So this isn't actually cutting for something that we need to make up next year to replace it, it's there, we're just. Splitting up the percentage, half on the front end and half on the back end. Um but I would want council to see the long.
So this is gonna be a five year, five instead of four year?
Well, it'll be, well, we're already, this is already year three in, so I think it's. Instead of like an additional one or two years, it'll be two or three. Um so I want you to see the full plan though, I don't want you to make decisions just on this conversation. Um but I just want direction that that's what you want us to bring back um in relation to that. So that doesn't have an impact on us this evening, though, council's saying, yes, we agree with the capital works. Um so that we can get working on those types of things, like we have previously early, especially the DC study, to be honest, that needs to get out and get worked on. Cuz it is a process um, so those kind of things. Um and then is there any concern with the two percent cola?
So, but I yeah, I I think I think it'd be great to get all of them back, everything back to to see if we can get it at a sub four percent overall. I think that would be a very one, a good one to be discussing about. Uh are you advocating for something different than the than the two percent cooler, or you think that's uh that's? That is good for staff retention, that's good for.
Technically, based on the policy, it's supposed to be more than that, but I think that. Again, we're we're also realize um like we're trying not to ask for too much. There are definitely other municipalities that are asking for five, six percent. Um we think that the two percent is reasonable.
So it's reasonable, that's why I continue with sort of the 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 council story. The 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 other council side of it saying that, you know, like, because staff is even willing to say willing, but they're 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 open for that. Not asking for more, where we say that we don't need ours. Um I think as I do as well, I was gonna make one last point, but I appreciate that the the cut conversation to, this is this is a fruitful conversation to us all. But also the same token, we're doing some great, I think, increases of that service too as well next year, as we're trying to, we're trying to manage this budget too as well with. We're talking about the extra ditching with what we're doing and everything else, so I think we're also trying to address. The concerns of those roads and address those concerns that are out there too as well. Um we're not just saying we're gonna hold steady and we're just gonna do the same thing and hope for the same results, we're looking at different options too as well as we're as we're doing this. Who knows, uh the staff obviously for making sure that we're doing that, if we have used to used to have discussions, I think it's important. Uh but I think it's also good that with with the direction that we're going, so anyways, just five thoughts.
Anyone else, Ali?
Do numbers.
I'm doing numbers.
She's already launched. All with way a couple of steps ahead.
I think this is great though, this has been, I, this is the this is the appropriate budget discussion, but again, always, we've really had it, because it's important that we're doing what we're doing.
So just quick numbers, so the fifty percent, so the one and a half percent basically, and then including policing will be at uh three point nine five. Quick numbers.
The quick numbers are sitting, taxpayer is good.
So we're also not trying to make up that twelve five next year though.
Yeah.
Um so, but we'll bring back those numbers, so no, I think in closing, I think that everybody, uh to be honest, staff. Always comes, they kind of make my job a little easy in the sense that they always come with very reasonable requests. It's never um a big Christmas list of things that they want, they realize that we're small, they realize um. That we've had some great things, new trucks, new buildings, some things going on. So um I appreciate each and every one of them and and what they bring forward into council for um. Also acknowledging the work uh that goes into it, um and to the rate pairs, we do understand and we are trying to keep it low. Um you know, it overall from an operating perspective with increasing of policing, a reduction funding from the province, I mean, we're still only at two point one seven. Um it's very low, so um we'll come back with these numbers. I think all I'm looking for this evening is that uh we kind of, the the nod to go ahead and get pricing on the capital stuff. And um the two percent cola, it's nice if we can roll it in in January, but.
Moved by Council Johnson, second by Debbie Carroll. Uh the direction to be given to council regarding the first draft twenty twenty six budget, being presented uh this report. To be incorporated in the second draft budget, twenty six, twenty six budget to be presented December second, twenty twenty five if need. And the council provide direction to notify the public that they intend to pass twenty twenty six budget. About being in January twenty twenty six. The council directs staff to proceed with pricing of the capital projects and reports to come back for to council. For final approval to ensure tax receives the most competitive pricing. And then further, the council approved cola twenty twenty six effective January first, twenty twenty six to be two percent.
What about you?
It was, it's already been a year. Thanks everybody for putting up with me for a year, um I don't think you'll be quite as much fun with uh. Council Johnson, a a little more fun to pick on, and like you're gonna miss awesome things, I'm very candid. You know, it's just not gonna be quite as much fun, uh but thank you guys for everything, is there anything? Can you give me something?
Maybe you know it's questions for Tom.
Yeah, well, Tom, I'm gonna appreciate our miss having to ask you a question. Um so on that note, uh we're gonna do the adjournment, moved by Debbie Carroll, second by Ricky Jennings. It can be the whole between for November eighteen, twenty twenty five, now be adjourned at. Eight or seven? Yeah? And all on paper, that is case.